Okay, we'll call this March 7th, 2023, meeting of the Salina Planting Commission to Order. Kai, has the Kansas Open Meetings Record Act been followed?
I can confirm that the packet was posted and the required notice of the meeting was provided.
Thank you. Dean, roll call.
I'm gonna call, Rul. Commissioner Farber.
Here.
Commissioner Ivy.
Here.
Commissioner Waters.
Here.
Commissioner Alt.
Here.
Chair Mike Seau.
Here.
Just a quick word, we have a quorum here of five, but our membership did increase from six to seven. Mr. Tom Seidow retired from Westar Energy, has been appointed to the Planning Commission, but he's not able to attend his first meeting till your next meeting in March. But we officially have seven members and five as a quorum.
Great. Welcome him. Approval of the minutes. Does everyone have a chance to read the minutes? Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Aye second.
Moving in second and approving the minutes from the February 21st meeting, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries. New business.
New business is carryover of previous business. And we have three applications that we'll go through in order relating to a property that's located on the east side of North Ohio Street, south of I-70. And this property is currently in the city limits, but it is zoned A1 agricultural. And there is a request been filed to rezone the property from A1 to I-2 light industrial. The property is also located in what we refer to as the North Ohio Overlay District. And in that district, there's a requirement that the Planning Commission review proposed site plans for development before building permits can be issued. So, Mr. Hers, we're gonna give you an overview of the site plan associated with this site. And then the final item 3.1C is the preliminary plat. So, we'll go through those in sequence. And then I'll defer to the chair. It's the chair's preference that we do A, B, and C, and vote on A before proceeding to B and C? Or would you like to hear all the reports and then make motions on each of the three items?
Personally, I'd like to hear all the reports and then get to all the motions at once. What does everybody else think?
I agree.
I agree.
So, what we'll do is we'll present the zoning, see what questions and comments arise. Mr. Hers will tell you about the site plan, and then I'll tell you about the plat. And then at the close of that, you can decide on actions that you want to take. But again, we're talking about a 15.43 acre tract of land. It's directly south of Foley Equipment, which is a project also in the overlay district where the Planning Commission approved, reviewed and approved the site plan for Foley's. And so, the staff has met with the applicants, representatives of Beck's Hybrid Seeds and their representative, Mr. Mays. And in discussing with them, we determined that based on the nature of their proposed operations, particularly their warehousing space, that the most appropriate zoning classification for this property would be I-2 light industrial. So, that is the application that has been requested. And so, they would plan to use this property for, both for test fields, but also to build a 96,000 square foot building that would be used for offices, crop seed sales, research, warehouse space, storage of vehicles and equipment. And in our opinion, this operation would have some similarities to Foley Equipment's operation directly to the north. And there's two additional items we wanted to point out. One, that this property, the majority of it, lies in the mapped 100-year floodplain for Mulberry Creek. And the second thing, as we noted, this is in a gateway overlay district. And so, we've summarized for you the basic requirements and development standards in the I-2 district. Two things that we would note is that in the I-2 district, parking lots and driveways may be surfaced with an all-weather material such as gravel or asphalt millings and doesn't have to be paved. And there is no landscaping required in the I-2 district. In the overlay district, paved parking driveways are required and front yard landscaping is required. And Mr. Hers will go over that in more detail. But the idea behind the overlay district is the Planning Commission and the City Commission were concerned that Ohio Street is a major gateway into Salina from I-70. And the overlay district is designed to give the opportunity to review the appearance and the layout of what gets built there. And so, in this case, the overlay district requirements supersede the I-2 requirements. And where there's a conflict, the provisions of the overlay district come into play. So, the example I gave, some of the things that are different involve parking lots and paving, front yard landscaping and outdoor display, as well as exterior building materials. So, the, as we look at the suitability of the site for development, this property has 453 feet of frontage on Ohio. However, the north edge of this property is about 1,000 feet south of I-70. And so, some could view this as suitable for some interstate-oriented commercial development. The applicant believes it's a prime location for a hybrid seed facility due to its proximity to I-70 and the flat agricultural land in the vicinity. And so, the northern portion of this corridor was viewed as being suitable for future commercial development because it's in the floodplain and not the floodway. So, I think one, one thing it's important to emphasize is, and we get that question asked both on North 9th and on North Ohio, how come the city doesn't grow out from Pacific to the interstate? And the reason for that is that basically between the flood control levee and I-70 is almost entirely floodway. And there's really no options for development in the floodway. But as you get close to I-70, then that property is floodplain instead of floodway. So, that little, the red line there, where the city limit, city has annexed that near the interchange, basically the city went out and looked at where the floodway, floodplain boundary was. And everything north of that line was floodplain and developable. And everything south of it is floodway and not developable. So, that's why you have that gap in there between the north edge of the city at Pacific and this complex out here. So, if you're in the floodplain, you can elevate a building pad. And as long as your building site is one foot above the 100-year flood elevation, then the property is developable. And the other difference between here and closer to the interchange is that this is just a two-lane section of Ohio, and there's no turn lanes. And so, this site's not really suitable for high-traffic generating uses like a truck stop. On the other hand, the city has gone out and made water and sanitary sewer improvements. And the applicant believes that the current A1 zoning inhibits development of the site compared to the similar situated property like Foley and Kenworth, both of which are zoned I-2. So, I think that Dustin had put up the graphics for the zoning of the surrounding areas. But essentially, on the east side with the Flying J, Travel Plaza, and the currently vacant Harley Davidson Building, those are zoned C7. Those are interchange, commercial zoning. But because of the nature of what Kenworth and Foley Equipment do, those are zoned I-2 light industrial. And Beck's Seeds is proposing to continue that pattern. And so, in 2001, a 140-acre benefit district was created to facilitate commercial development in this area. And that benefit district was for the installation of water and sewer lines. And I think you've got a graphic in your packet, but Mr. Hers is turning on the utility layer here. So, going up Ohio Street, you've got a major water line. And then you also have a sewer line that comes up from Stimel Road. And so, this is capable of being served by public water and sewer. And so, the, as we pointed out, Kenworth Truck Center and Foley are both zoned I-2. And so, this I-2 zoning would be compatible with that. We have all the public utilities in place. As we noted, we can't say that this is an absolute match with the comprehensive plan which envisions commercial zoning and uses along North Ohio. But as we pointed out, this is over 1,000 feet south of the interchange. So, it is less suitable for interstate-oriented businesses like Travel Plazas. And so, the character of Kenworth and Foley in this facility are service businesses. And they serve the surrounding region. And their design and operation is, while industrially zoned, is somewhat more commercial in character than a traditional industrial district. And the other thing we point out is that due to the overlay district, there's less concern about having industrial zoning along North Ohio because we have the overlay district standards. So, on page eight, we've summarized four findings that we think that could be made to support this rezoning request. One of those is the distance from Interstate 70. Because of that, it's more suitable for light industrial use than interstate-oriented commercial uses. It is adjacent to existing I-2 zone property. And a change to I-2 with the overlay district restrictions would be compatible with both the commercial industrial development in the vicinity. Public utilities are available and can be extended to the building site, making it suitable for urban-type development. And this, based on the plan submitted, we think that the requested zoning change would conform with the comprehensive plan's goal of enhancing the North Ohio entryway into the community. So, we'll go back at the conclusion of the three items and go over the alternatives in detail. But at this time, I'll pause for any questions that the commissioners might have about this area or the property in general. But it is, it is the floodplain and the floodway between the city and I-70 is the biggest influencer of what can be developed and can't be developed out in this area.
Any questions to staff?
I have one, Dean. And this is just a confirmation, looking through the packet. This subject property is completely within city limits, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And is there gonna be any issue with traffic? You mentioned that it is just a two-lane road in that section with turning and so forth?
Well, this is not a high-traffic generating type use. It's more comparable with, it's not, there's not a big retail. So, the primary traffic is gonna be for employees and then for those involved in agricultural business that are visiting to learn about Beck's Hybrid Seeds. So, it's not going to be a high-traffic generating use. And so, we simply pointed out that farther towards the intersection, knowing when they redid the interchange, that Flying J was already there. They incorporated widened lanes and turn lanes into that, and they did not extend that farther south. So, having lower-traffic generating uses is more desirable here and more likely to occur here because we don't have those improvements. But you can see the red line on the left-hand side of the aerial photo. That's the existing city limit line, and that's also the west boundary of this parcel. So, everything in that red box, I don't know if you can zoom out, Dustin, but it's a little unusual when you look at it on a map. But essentially, this is an island.
Right.
Annexation. And so, this little box here was done. There's 140 acres in there. And the city steadied that and decided that these 140 acres not being in the floodway were the most likely to develop. So, we annexed that and put utilities in. And so, this is consistent with that plan.
Thank you. Just thanks for that confirmation.
Any further questions to staff? Okay, are we ready to move on to item B?
Item 3.1B is a proposed site development plan for the 15-acre site. And again, it's a, we've seen the number 92,000 and 96,000. We're using 96,000 because that's Beck's number. But we're talking about a 96,000 square foot building. And it would be located in the northwest corner of the site. So, I'll let Mr. Hers give you an overview of that.
Thank you, Dean. So, as Mr. Andrew mentioned during his rezoning staff report, the subject property is located in the North Ohio Street Gateway Overlay District. And what that means is that all development that happens within that overlay district is going to be subject to the development standards that are placed on top of the zoning. So, when a property gets rezoned, those development standards are in play. But then there is additional limitations and additional development standards that are imposed on the property. And that's what we're dealing with in this particular case. So, as Mr. Andrew mentioned, the I-2 district typically does not require off-street parking to be paved. It also does not require landscaping. And it also does not require aesthetic standards for, or architectural building standards for new buildings and new construction. And the overlay district requires all of those things. So, those are some of the things that we're going to talk about. In terms of the site plan that is being proposed, the building outline is about where my cursor is, just to kind of give context of what we're looking at. And the property is set back over 752 feet from Ohio. So, it is set back quite a distance. And the reason for that is because this is the area, that's the high ground, where we're out of the floodplain. And there's also an area out front in which there's going to be stormwater detention as well as agricultural activities. And so, the building is set back a fair distance from Ohio Street. And it also meets all of the other setback and bulk regulation requirements of the overlay district. The preliminary site plan also shows 55 off-street parking spaces. Staff doesn't know how many would be required for the facility. One of the things that we will need is a two-scale floor plan that breaks down how the property will be used and all the dimensions of those uses within there. And we do have, just as a way of providing some context, we do have a floor plan that isn't to scale, but does give us a breakdown of some of the uses that are within the building. Primarily, you'll see that there's a lot of warehousing and storage that takes place. There's also some office area and some areas in which the equipment will be stored inside the building as well for their facilities. And then, meeting rooms for potential customers to come learn about their products and the things that they do at Beck's Seeds. So, what staff will need is a floor plan to confirm how many off-street parking spaces would be required and compare that to the 55 spaces that are being proposed. In addition to that, we'll also need the site plan to be revised and updated to show the proposed handicap accessible spaces. There are going to be a number of ADA parking spaces that are going to be required for the facility that will need to be shown on the site plan. And we'll also need the site plan to be updated to show the loading and loading areas. It appears as though there's a number of loading and loading areas on the west side of the building, as well as on the east side of the building. But those will need to be shown on the site plan for confirmation. The driveway curb cut that's coming in off of Ohio is 50 feet wide. And the maximum width that we have in code is 30 feet. Typically, projects that propose really wide curb cuts do so because they have 18-wheel trucks or some other type of large delivery vehicles that are bringing inventory and supplies to the site or taking them out to other areas. In those cases, what we do is we keep the driveway limitation of 30 feet. And we increase the radiuses in the right-of-way so that when those trucks are turning, their wheels are where they need to be and they can easily maneuver that turn with a narrower driveway. Landscape, the, even though the property is zoned I-2 because of the overlay district, it is going to be required to have front yard landscaping. And the entire site will have to have at least 20% landscaping, which, based on what we're seeing on the preliminary site plan, the area doesn't look to be a problem. But we actually need a landscape planting plan that shows us the location of all the landscaping areas and the proposed tree units therein. One of the concerns that staff has and can be difficult when we're dealing with an overlay district is most properties within the city of Salina don't have architectural building standards. And in the overlay district, we do. Specifically, the, specifically, the overlay district does not allow for pre-engineered metal buildings. And it appears that this is what Beck's is proposing with a masonry brick frontage. But the frontage is actually going to face, pull the site plan up. The frontage will actually face Interstate and not Ohio. And the overlay district requires that the facade facing Ohio be dressed up. And then the other three sides be dressed up with at least 20% masonry, brick, stucco, or other beautification materials that would dress up the building. And so, that's something that the architect and the project team will have to work on is revising the elevation drawings so that the Ohio frontage has more masonry or enhanced visual materials and that the other three sides have at least 20% of those enhanced materials as well. In the alternative, the Planning Commission could create an exception for that requirement. And that requirement could be based on the distance from Ohio Street. And it is 752 feet from Ohio, so that's something to consider as well. One of the other visual architectural concerns with the property is that the east side of the building has overhead doors. And, let's see if I can find, I don't know if I... Okay, so, this is the west elevation and the east elevation is mere to this in this particular case, where there's overhead doors and metal siding that's facing Ohio. Here's kind of a close-up of what that looks like. So, the front, which would be the north, is about 50% brick. And it kind of wraps around the corner with the corrugated metal being on the other three sides and above the brick. This would be an example of the east side. This would be similar to what's being proposed here. And so, those would be the things that the Planning Commission will want to consider when they're looking at this project. So, with that, there are a number of revisions that are needed for the project in order to adhere to all of the overlay district requirements. So, if the Planning Commission wishes to review a revised site plan, a proposed landscape planning plan, and revised two-scale building elevation drawings, prior to approving the proposed development plan, staff would recommend postponing your approval or consideration of the proposed development plan until the developer can come up with new revised plans. In the alternative, if you feel like the outstanding items are items that staff can deal with administratively with the developer, we do have a number of conditions of approval that we have recommended on the bottom of page 11 and 12. And those deal with a lot of the revisions that staff would be requesting. One would be a floor plan showing, again, the location and dimensions of all the uses so that we can calculate parking, a revised parking plan that would show ADA parking stalls, as well as all the loading and loading areas. Landscape planning plan that would have at least 11,080 square feet of front yard landscaping area and at least 22 tree units. And 22% of the entire zoning lot would also have to be dedicated towards landscaping area or open space area. And then number four, a two-scale building elevation drawing so that we can calculate the height of the building, as well as confirm that the site does meet all of the aesthetic architectural building standards, meaning having an enhanced building face along Ohio and then an enhanced face of at least 20% on the other three sides. And then we also have some requirements and responsibilities that involve the public water line, as well as fire hydrant location and approval by the fire department so that in an emergency event, the fire department would have access to water because we're so far away from Ohio and other existing fire hydrants. The site is over one acre, which means that a notice of intent needs to be submitted to KDHE for their approval before we can issue a building permit. And then, all of the surfaces and access drives would have to be paved. And an operational water system would have to be in place prior to vertical construction. And again, that's to provide access to the site and water in emergency situations where if, during the construction project, EMS or the fire department needs to get to the site, they are able to do so. And then the applicant shall satisfactory complete construction of the stormwater detention pond area before a certificate of occupancy is issued. And a separate sign permit would be needed for any signs that are being proposed. And then the project shall be completed in substantial conformance to the plans that would eventually be approved and noted as the final development plan. I've also added an 11th one that isn't in the staff report, but it's something that I didn't notice. And that's the applicant needs to submit revised site plan that reduces the width of the proposed driveway entrance off of Ohio Street from 50 feet to that 30-foot maximum. And with that, we'll take any questions that you might have, or we can move on to part three, which is the plat of the project.
So, what we're saying is that this is, we would consider this as a preliminary site plan and elevations and things of that nature. I think between the storyboards we have here and what's in the packet, you have a good sense of what is, what is being proposed. And so, the real thing that makes this different from Foley's is that the, what you would call the enhanced entrance to the building faces north towards I-70 and not towards Ohio. On the other hand, the building is 750 feet back from Ohio. So, you could, as Planning Commissioners conclude, that it doesn't really impact Ohio. And I don't, we have the, well, at least, I wanted to... it doesn't really impact Ohio. And I don't, we have the, well, at least I wanted to point out on this board here that, um...
This is actually a view of the facility superimposed on a photograph. So this actually is Foley Equipment right here. This is the Harley Davidson building here and this is the proposed facility superimposed on the site with Ohio being here. So this is a perspective of how this interrelates to Foley, to Ohio Street and to the other properties. And so you can see that the building is oriented with the entrance facing north, whereas on Foley Equipment, which is much closer to the street, their entrance is facing Ohio.
Can I guess I would also note on that or add to that, when Foley came in and it came before the planning commission, uh, the planning commission had them add, uh, concrete wainscoting of, of a pre-cast type around the three sides and then having the, the Ohio frontage be fully, uh, that decorative masonry concrete that they have out there. So that's as a, as a point of reference or example, that's what was approved for Foley.
Any further questions of staff?
What's considered, um, frontage for the landscape requirements? Is it facing Ohio or what would be considered the front of the building?
Yeah, so the front of the building is going to be the, the building facade that faces Ohio. And for front yard landscaping, you're looking at the lineal distance of the street frontage of the property. So in this case, you have this distance from the northeast corner to the southeast corner. So this whole area here would be your front landscaping area.
Thank you.
Do you want to go to the aerial photo, Dustin, and show the front of Foley's?
Yeah, it's not a bad idea. Now, let's see.
One of the things we did with Foley's and the planning commission, we kind of both I seventy and North Ninth Street, we incorporated equipment, display and landscaping and kind of coordinated the two together. So they have kind of a, a berm and landscaping, but they also have pads in here where they display equipment. And so their, their front yard is considered this area here. And then if you go up to the northwest corner, we also have, again, some landscaping here and incorporating, again, equipment, display and a, and a landscape, a berm and, and buffer there. So they actually have frontage on I seventy. This property doesn't have frontage on I seventy, but it, it does have frontage on Ohio. So their, their front yard for landscaping purposes would be Ohio Street. Similarly to, you can kind of see it, but there is landscaping in front of the Harley Davidson building there as well. So the, the purpose of the front yard landscaping is to just try to enhance the, the appearance from the street. If they would like to do landscaping like this showed around the building, um, enhance that, that is certainly welcome and encouraged, but in terms of what we would consider front yard landscaping and be what, what is in proximity to Ohio Street. Any further questions of staff on item B?
Yes. Um, Dustin, I apologize if I missed this. Where is the, on the aerial photo, where will the entrance be off Ohio into this facility approximately? Right there?
Yes.
That's a good spot.
So this is that angled piece of the property. And so if we, as a point of reference, go back to the site plan, you'll see this is the angle.
Yeah, there it is.
And so the driveway is kind of almost to the, where that changes direction, almost. So it's just north of that piece.
But it's lined up across from...
Directly across from the Harley Davidson site.
Okay, just clarifying that, okay.
Yeah, no, that's a good question. So yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And just as it, those, I think there's a couple items I've noted that will come back before the planning commission, but we have been in contact with some individuals that are proposing a new occupancy and new life for the Harley Davidson building and those, those plans who come before the commission, they just have not been filed yet, but we have had some discussions that it's, there's interest in that building in sight. Okay, are we ready to move on to item C? Yes. And so your decision point on item B, when we get to that, will be, um, one, that you postpone to get all, all the level of detail or two, you're comfortable with what's been presented and would delegate to staff ironing out those details on, on the site plan. The third item is a, a relatively simple one-lot plat. That's to take this fifteen-point-four acre site and platted into a single building lot. You can see this line right here is the, is the floodplain boundary. So everything inside this line is outside the mapped floodplain. Everything over here is in the mapped floodplain. We're talking about a single lot. It has frontage on and access to Ohio. Ohio is paved, but Ohio, um, is what we would call an interim street standard, meaning it has the required width, the required paving thickness, but a, a public city street has curb and gutter and it has sidewalks on both sides. North Ohio does not have that, but it does meet what we would call the interim street standard. And so we're talking about a single access opening on Ohio. Uh, the rest of the frontage would have restricted access. Um, again, we pointed out the distinctions between I two, which has a minimum lot width of fifty feet, but in the overlay district, the minimum width is a hundred and fifty feet. And again, we have five hundred and fifty feet, so that's a non-issue. The minimum lot size is fifteen thousand square feet. We have fifteen acres. So there's a, there's a twelve-inch water line along the east side of North Ohio that goes up to Flying J. This is capable of providing adequate flows for their domestic and fire protection use. This line also serves Foley and Kenworth. There's a gravity sewer line that run, runs along the east side of Ohio. That also serves Flying J and serves Kenworth and Foley. We have electric lines and natural gas supply lines in the area. Um, this area is a challenge for draining, uh, and for runoff control. And there was a drainage study that was submitted. Uh, our city engineer still has some questions about, um, the total pond depth, the water elevation and whether this will be a retention or a detention pond. So a, a retention pond holds water and then the water percolates through the bottom of the pond and, and it goes dry. A detention pond detains the water and then it briefly and then it discharges that water to a receiving area. In this case, there's not a lot of good receiving areas available. So, um, our engineer's going to work with Kavali, the engineer on this, to refine, um, the drainage, uh, steady and pond design. There's no new right-of-way that's being provided. Um, and so we, we have on the site plan showed rough pond dimensions, but the, um, the plat did not. And so those will need to be matched up. But the primary improvements we're talking about here is that the Beck's is proposing to be allowed to develop with North Ohio remaining in its current interim standard condition. The city engineer has determined that no axel, decel, turning lanes or other roadway improvements are needed to serve this development. Beck's will be responsible for running a public water line, um, back along this alignment to provide water to the building and also to the necessary fire hydrants to provide fire protection. That will be a public line. And then they're planning to extend a private sewer line from Ohio over to the building. They'll also be responsible for construction of the detention pond. And so this property has already been subject to special assessments for the water and sewer line. And so even if they were to choose to try to special assess their public water line, that would not impact any other properties. They would be the only benefiting property. So again, we'll, we'll cover the alternatives and recommendations in order when we, we close the, the public comment portion on these three items. But that, that would conclude staff's report. We'll cover the alternatives and our recommendations when we get to that point, but we would be open to any questions or see if there's any comments from the applicant or the public on this item. Any questions of staff on item C? Could the applicant's representative address?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners Jeff Mace, uh, one fifty-seven South Seventh Compro Realty here on behalf of the Beck family and Beck Superior Hybrid. Thank you again for allowing us to be in front of you today with this question. Uh, I don't have a lot of comments. I've got a few questions. Uh, generally, when, when Mr. Hurd went through the overlay district, I was taking copious notes and nothing stands to us as a problem, uh, in that regard. I did have a question and it's just I didn't follow. Uh, the thirty-foot opening, your resolution for that with truck traffic, I, I wasn't clear in what you were saying and I just want to be able to communicate it correctly. So you, you don't allow the fifty-foot, but you allow wider after the, or after the entrance, it's a wider area?
So the width of the driveway entrance is measured at the property line.
Okay.
Okay, so that's going to be right here. Now, the width of the overall approach, a portion of it is going to be in the right-of-way. So you have these radius wings right here that are in the right-of-way. And so what we do, especially if we have a lot of distance between the property line and the existing curb, is you can have really wide radiuses that allow for trucks to make easy maneuvers into and out of the site without having to have a really wide driveway entrance.
Okay.
So the, the width and the, the paving in the right-of-way is, is what we're talking about.
Okay, thank you for that clarity. And again, I would say the same thing.
Additional width is usually not needed on the driveway itself. It's just getting from the street into the driveway. So basically, we have driveway width limits, but we have unlimited radius.
Okay, perfect. Very good. Uh, again, and we've talked about a number of these items, uh, relative to the overlay district and don't stand at any, have any issues with it. The only item that I would mention is that, that east elevation, uh, facing Ohio, the distance off of Ohio, these, this is actually three buildings, as you saw, there's three buildings that they put together. So we're three hundred foot wide. So if we eliminate overhead doors on that east elevation, it becomes functionally rather cumbersome just to not have access into the buildings from both sides, uh, you know, the east and west sides. So do we have any issue with upgrading that facade and making it look better? I mean, you can, I hope, I don't know what you guys see through your lens, but they build a nice facility and they, they generally exceed their landscaping requirements by the city and, and we've, you know, we've built this in a couple other markets. So, uh, they're going to build a nice facility and if, if, if it's your desire to need, to see some upgrade, it causes me a little concern about if the answer was we don't want any overhead doors on the east side, that may be problematic functionally for the size of a facility. So I offer that to you for your consideration. In working with staff, uh, through this, through this request, we were hopeful that you guys would allow, based on the thoroughness of their report, to just allow us to work through these final details and site plan and all that. We have no issues with providing any and all of the elevations, the architectural plans. We know they're necessary. Uh, but to keep this moving, I think some of you are aware of, this has been, well, you're all aware that this has been delayed or postponed. So would request, I mean, if there's any way that you can see comfort, find comfort with letting us work directly with staff, we have no issues with meeting their requirements. I guess that was my biggest, uh, point that I wanted to make before you...
So backing up just a little bit, Jeff, so the, uh, landscaping and the, um, material usage on the east side, you guys would be okay with that?
We're okay with that. They're gonna, they, they would, they would do that anyway.
Okay.
Uh, they, this isn't, this is a little, they search out sites like this in their geographic area. They like that interstate visibility, but then they also need that good access. Uh, to give you a little background, what they do, I mean, they, they seed plots that they build, they will actively throughout the year be bringing farmers in and saying, this is why you need to plant Beck's seed. Here's a, here's an irrigated seed plot and this is this hybrid and this is that. And they've got, um, uh, they're going to be working closely with, with K-State Salina, but they, they've got agronomists on staff and they do. And then they have field days that are a couple days long that they bring in a thousand, fifteen hundred farmers and they host them in town for, for, for a couple days. And so this serves for the majority out of the year. This is a one-off farmer that their salesman's like, come into Salina and let me show you what we do and we meet and we walk the seed plots. They will have events throughout the year that they bring in a large number of people, host them onsite. The people will be all over those seed plots. Uh, so that, there's, it's kind of multifunctional. Generally speaking, we're going to have trucks coming and delivering Beck's hybrid seed and we're going to have box trucks delivering it to, to the farms. I mean, that's the activity you're going to see out there for the majority of the time. And then you may have a couple farmers in and out throughout a day or a week, you know, one-offs. But the, the time you're going to, to address kind of the, the intensity of the overall deal, the time you're going to see that is during those field days. And they provide transportation. They'll be parking them somewhere else and busing them out there because they can't, you know, they're not going to be able to handle that many guys. So that gives you a little background on their, on their day-to-day opera, you know, on what you expect to see out there on an annual basis.
Do you know if the plots will be irrigated?
Some will and some won't. They try and mirror kind of the environment that their farmers are practicing. So we've got a lot of dryland corn, dryland wheat, but also irrigated. So it'd be a combination of both. So they can, again, it's, this is a, this is a great big laboratory essentially for how, it's how they operate. And, and, you know, Kansas being the wheat producer and, and bigger and bigger in corn that they are, that's why they're choosing Kansas and Salina is centrally located. So yes, is the answer to the question. Some will, some won't.
Thanks.
Approximately, how many full-time employees will they have?
It's a great question because, and we're, we're talking to the Kansas Department of Commerce at the same time about that. We're already hiring people or they're already hiring people. And do you consider the salesperson that is living in Minneapolis that's full-time, a full-time employee to this facility? So to that end, I mean, on a daily basis, firing up, they're going to have four to six. When they get, when they're stabilized and they get out there three years, that's probably going to be more like eight to ten. You're going to have guys that are going to be at the sales counter. If you walk in and you need something, you'll have salespeople in and out when they're close, but they might also be in Belleville that day. So I'm not trying to be ambiguous, not answer your question, I'm just trying to give you the, the best answer I can.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you.
So, but they have, we, they've actively been hiring. I don't know if you've driven around, there's billboards of Beck's around the state now and they've already hired, I think, well, they've, they've hired their regional sales manager and I think they've hired two or three of their, their sales guys for this, that'll, that'd be out of this area. So that's what I can tell you.
Jeff, where's the nearest facility that they have?
Uh, Goner.
Where?
Goner, Nebraska, up by York. And they're just in the process, they're, it, it's running just ahead of the, well, substantially now ahead of this one. But, uh, York, they try and get in that hundred and fifty mile radius, uh, which you'll, if any of you come from the farm family, which I, I do, those farmers don't like to leave the farm. Uh, in fact, they're out of, they're out of Indianapolis or Atlanta, Indiana, and they have, they have a fleet of jets that serves one purpose and that's going and picking up the farmer that, and says, we're going to bring you to our corporate office. But they pick him up in Hayes, fly him to Atlanta and have him home at night for dinner. And that's why they use those planes to get those guys to come into their actual home corporate office facility. So just, it's, it's just innate. Those guys aren't kind of, gotta, can't get away from my irrigation or can't get away from my cattle for an extended period of time. So that's, that's how that radius is formed. They've found those farmers don't want to go that, that, that far. So...
You've been away from the farm too long. It's supper for farmers.
Yeah, um, okay, you're right. I stand corrected. So, any other questions I can answer for you right now?
So the information they provided me, they have a location in Henderson, Kentucky, London, Ohio, Effingham, Illinois, Colfax, Iowa, and Goner, Nebraska. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone from the audience? Do we have anybody online? Would you like to comment on this application?
Uh, I just have a small question. I'm late to this. I was just wondering where the plots of corn will go. Will they go in front of the building, behind the building?
If you see, if you look, if you can look up here. So just... So just very, is this?
They're going to be east.
Yep. So this is that detention and parking and all that. And these are the seed plots that would lay, so here's Ohio. They would lay out like that. And they're manicured.
Is that more than 15 acres or is that part of the 15?
This is, this we're leaving in a hatch and in the cabin because we, it's already appropriately zoned. So the request for the 15 acres is just a plot with a building and a parking.
All right, thanks. Yeah, I was just curious. Sorry. What was that?
No, yeah, they're, they're, they're going to operate on more than 15 acres, but this, the 15 acres is their developed site and they've already got agricultural zoning for their other parts and that not, doesn't need to be addressed.
Dustin, do we have anybody online?
We have Mr. Burton online. I'm not sure if he has anything he'd like to add to this discussion or not, but we have no one else from the public.
Mr. Burton, do you care to address the commission?
No, I'm here for the next agenda item. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Bring it back to the commission for discussion and action.
I have a question for staff. Mr. Mace said that they'd be willing to work with the staff on all the stipulations on the planning of the building. What is your guys' thought of the east side of that building?
Well, that, and we can just discuss that now before we get to item vote on 3.1B, but you have, there's, there's really three, three options. One is relatively extreme from the standpoint of the distance away, but the, the guidelines for the overlay district say that overhead doors shouldn't face Ohio. You can grant an exception to that based on the distance from the street. So if you arrive at that conclusion, then the second decision point is whether you want to grant an exception to the, the 20% non-metal exterior on the east side. So that would be a choice and that would allow that to be entirely metal with the overhead doors. Or you could say that you'd like to see some wainscoting added on the east side except for the door openings. And so I don't know if you have that photo, Dustin, but what, and Foley has openings, they just don't have the, the bay openings on the Ohio side. But what Foley did was that they, between these doors, they just put some masonry wainscoting between these openings here and here and here at, at the lower level so that I, they were like seven, seven feet tall is what they, they did. And then it was all metal above that and the doors were unchanged. So your, your choices on the east side, you could, one, grant an exception to allow the overhead doors. That is your decision. You could either require no wainscoting on the east side or some masonry wainscoting on the east side except for openings. That's your decision. The other aspects of that, the, the ADA parking, the loading spaces, the calculating the building height and the absolute number of parking spaces, those are types of things we do day-to-day on building permits. And when we're talking about delegating that to us, we're talking about instead of exactly pinning down the exact height of the building, the exact number of parking spaces, the exact number of plantings, that you say that you're comfortable with this plan and you'll let staff work out those details. But the, the things that require your decision would be the facade, the enhanced facade facing north instead of east, which that's within your discretion to allow. And the overhead doors are within your discretion to allow because of the distance from Ohio. And then the question of wainscoting or no wainscoting, masonry wainscoting on the east, that lies in your decision, not ours. But what you'd be saying if you approved it today is that with those stipulations and then that you would be comfortable with staff working out the details on a building permit review.
Dean, the Kenworth has overhead doors facing Ohio.
It does.
Was that before the overlay district?
It was built in the county long, long, long time before. It's, it's the oldest thing out there. It dates back to the late 70s or early 80s. And so everything at Kenworth was already there. It was annexed after the fact. The overlay district was after the fact. The main, main thing that happened is that the KDOT came along and condemned almost their entire front yard and, and moved the street closer to their building. But the, yes, they do have overhead doors to face that, but that predates the overlay district. So the only things that have been done out there on the overlay district are the, the Foley equipment.
If we are to take action on these, do we need to do them in order and start with?
Yeah, we would do those in order and I would start by just giving you your options on, on the zoning side of things. So your, your options would be to recommend approval of I-2 zoning for the 15.4 acre tract as requested. You could postpone consideration of the rezoning request if you feel like you need additional information from the applicant to make a decision on the zoning. Or you could recommend denial of the change, leaving it agricultural. If you wish to recommend approval of the I-2 zoning, we've recommended two conditions, one of which you would be addressing at today's meeting. And the other one would be that the only thing that would come back to you would be a final recordable plat for the Beck's addition. And so the, your recommendation to, to zone it I-2 would be subject to those two conditions. The case of Foley equipment, their zoning approval and their site plan approval were about six years apart. And this is being done concurrently. So this, that's why we have that as, as a condition, but that could be fulfilled at today's meeting if you want. But the item 3.1A would be you could recommend approval of the zoning to I-2, subject to satisfactory plating of the property and subject to approval of the proposed site plan for the Beck seed facility.
Any discussion on this matter?
We're doing each of these individually correct.
Yeah, we want a motion on, item 3.1A is first on the agenda and that's the question of what the property should be zoned.
I'd make a motion that we approve this to I-2 zoning with the specifications that Dean discussed. Do I need to be more specific than that or?
It's, it's.
No, that's, that's fine. I think.
No, it's I-2 is all we're talking about, so.
I second it.
Been motioned and seconded to approve application Z-22-12 or our item 3.1-A. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries.
So your options on the item 3.1B would be to postpone consideration to allow all the details that Mr. Hertz mentioned about driveway width, ADA spaces, building height, those types of things to be pinned down before you acted on the site plan. Or the other alternative is to approve the site plan, subject to the condition and the assignment of staff, the responsibility to carry those out. The main thing, we have most of those conditions outlined in the staff report that Mr. Hertz laid out. So your options would be to approve the preliminary site plan to allow the facility to be constructed as submitted. You could approve it, subject to certain revisions or conditions. You could postpone consideration of the site plan to allow revisions to be made or more details to be provided. Or you could deny approval of the site plan. And so in any formation of the, a motion, that you should indicate in the motion whether your motion includes an exception to having the front facade face Ohio and whether it includes an exception to allow overhead doors to face Ohio. And then it would be up to the maker of the motion whether they would like to see masonry, wainscoting added to the east side except for the, the door openings.
I have a quick question on the recommendations, just to make sure that I'm clear on what's listed here. Recommendation number four on page 12 of the report. So in there, it says specifically the entire east building facade facing Ohio street will need to be enhanced with brick decorative masonry or stucco. And then the south and west building frontages will need to be enhanced with at least 20% also. I thought during our discussion earlier, we were talking about just needing that east side, not the south and the west side.
So the code requires the main frontage facing Ohio to be the most enhanced face. In this case, the applicant is proposing to have the north face be their most enhanced face. The code also requires that the other sides of the building, the other three sides of the building not facing Ohio, have at least 20% of those frontages be enhanced.
Okay.
And so that would be, that would be a consideration as well as the, basically, should the west side and south side also be enhanced 20%? Or should that be an exception as well? That's what that's referring to.
So that condition, you were correct, that condition number four contract contradicts what I just said. So.
Just want to make sure.
Yes. So that, condition number four, to make that work properly would be that you would be granting an exception to having the enhanced facade face Ohio. And you could have a choice of requiring that at least 20% of the east facade to be enhanced with brick decorative masonry or stucco finishes. Or you could choose to allow it to be completely metal with the overhead doors. Those are your choices. But the number four should be modified so that it only would require the 20% on the east facade and not the entire east facade. And then you would, you can either choose to require the 20% along the east facade or choose not to require it at all. But you, you need to first decide the, the two exceptions that you need to identify, if you choose to grant them, would be that you would allow the enhanced facade to face north and not Ohio, that you would allow the overhead doors to face Ohio and not to the north. And then you could either allow, allow for no wainscoting on the Ohio side or you could require wainscoting on the east facade except for the openings.
This might be a question for Jeff. On the east side elevation on that picture, came in so far from top to bottom with brick, was that about 20% or, or do you know?
I can't speak to the exact, I can tell you that with what we've had internal conversations with, because that's going to be their driveway too. You know, how they're accessing, that's how, that's how the customers are coming in and seeing it. They don't want to spend all that money on the north and then have the, have the, the east side look like an old metal building. So they would have no problem with, with the 20%, meaning the 20% threshold.
Okay.
The other thing, since I had the opportunity, bear in mind that there's going to be a lot of landscaping up front too, as you think. I, I mentioned that primarily about the overhead doors. There's going to be trees and plantings that are going to be blocking some of that from Ohio innately just because of what the landscape code requires. So I think aesthetically, with it being that 580-foot off Ohio, I would ask you to bear that in mind as you form your, form your opinions. But we wouldn't have any issue with, with meeting the 20, 20% criteria. There, there's, they wouldn't have any issue with doing that.
Same with south side? I, I don't see the west side.
Is, is Foley really on the west side improved? I haven't noticed.
They have, they have concrete masonry.
Okay.
On all sides.
Yeah, I mean, if, if that's what the overlay, overlay district requires, we, we've had, there's no surprises here for them in that regard. So, I mean, you guys need to serve in good conscience relative to the spirit of the overlay district. And if that's what's required, that's what's required, would be my answer to you. I just would rather not have to wrap the entire buildings at whatever that is, 12-foot tall.
Right.
And that, we start running into some real money, you know? So.
And that's my concern is, based on the design that they have here, if they're going to wrap that side, they're probably going to do it at the same height instead of lower to try to make it blend in. Now they may do a different route, but I don't think to wrap this whole building that way.
I can't speak to what, how far they will go, would like to meet the requirements that you all feel comfortable with. I can tell you, we've had internal conversations about this being the front door, you know, and then you're going to pull around to the north and park at the front door. They, they don't do much, and by the way, signage, they, they treat, their buildings are actually what they're branded. I mean, those big, you know, hoop top buildings is how they try and brand. But they don't, they're not going to be out there putting up a great big Beck seed. They're very Christian people and they've got a large cross that they try and incorporate. But they, they treat their buildings are kind of their marquee and that's why they like it facing the interstate. So that, they, they try and make their buildings their, their monument sign, if you will, or pole sign, if that's of any help.
Let me throw out this idea and just see what you think and see what the board thinks. If, because it, it sounds like you're saying that they were planning on, if you can see my cursor, just taking the brick all the way across this front. If they're going to do that across the front and then just turn the corner like they did here, and then having the rest, the balance be metal on the south and the west, does that kind of fit their, what they had in mind? And if so, is, is the board good with that idea?
I'm not certain of that and I'd rather not make that commitment. I need to, but if, if, if the, if the threshold is 20% and the board's comfortable with 20%, I have no, no problem, you know, committing them to that because that's the overlay district standard. I'm not telling you that they won't go further, but I don't, I prefer not to obligate them here today of that. If the board's comfortable with 20%, then that would be our request.
First, first of all, let's confirm the fact that we, are we okay with having the overhead doors on the east side?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
I think we're all in agreement there, so.
And whatever you're comfortable with as far as enhanced.
Did the 20%, then it's, on that east side, it's a bare minimum. And if they wanted to do more than they can on however they wanted to do it aesthetically, but I wouldn't do apartment on the south and west.
I agree.
Could you work with that stuff then on the, Dustin?
Do a minimum of 20%.
It's got south and west.
Create an exception, 20% on the south and west. We could work with the applicant on a design that meets criteria.
To me, the south is the, the least of the ones that you're going to see. I, I, I ride up and down that road all the time and I, I don't, you're so far away. I don't, I don't think that that's going to be a big deal. But, you know, if that's in the overlay district and that's what we're supposed to do, I'm, I'm okay with 20% on, on that side. And then the same thing on the, on the west side. I mean, you're going to have some visibility there from the interstate. So just for your perspective, in 2016, the planning commission approved a plan for Foley's and they were, they were doing 100% pre-cast concrete on all four sides. And then their cost estimates came in and that, that did not work out. So then they switched from a 100% concrete exterior to metal building on those sides with, with the masonry wainscoting. But their, their initial plan, they had 100%, 100% concrete on all four sides and then their cost estimates came in much higher than they anticipated. So they modified that. So the plan that was approved for Foley's had the enhanced Ohio side and then it's primarily a metal building except for some wainscoting trim around the lower portions of the other sides.
of the other sides.
As far as precedent for future buildings out there, how many more, how much more room is there out there? How many more buildings can give?
Well, there, there is some room on the other side of the street. If Mr. Koster's house was to go, there might, there might be some room farther south here. But the, what we're trying to point out to you is that the reason we're, we're emphasizing the 752 feet from Ohio, to us, you're not setting a precedent, because if your decision's based on the fact that the building's 750 feet from Ohio, and the next one that comes before you is 100 feet from Ohio, then you have not set a precedent, because you have entirely different situations in terms of distance from Ohio. The, the rationale for having the overhead doors and the things facing Ohio is the fact that this building is set so far back compared to Kenworth or Foley or anything comparable. So that, that would be the basis for your decision.
Any further discussions or questions of Mr. Mays or staff? Anybody? Thank you. Anybody from the audience or online?
I do not believe we have anyone from the audience interested in this meeting topic.
Okay. Thank you. Wouldn't anyone like to make a motion?
From what I'm hearing, the consensus is, we're, we're looking at granting an exception for the front facade.
I think the easiest thing to do before making a motion is to have, identify the exceptions that the commission feels comfortable with, and all, all just walk through those one by one, and we can, we, you can indicate your, your consent to that by a vote or show of hands. So, how many commissioners are supportive of having the enhanced facade face to the north?
Yes.
How many commissioners are supportive of having the overhead doors face Ohio Street?
Yes.
So, that, that is unanimous. And then, those, those are two exceptions that you're granting, based on the distance being 750 feet from the street. And so, how many commissioners are in favor of adding wainscoting on the east side, except for openings, and no wainscoting on the other two sides? So that the only enhancement would be on the east side, but that the west and south sides remain as proposed.
Hang on just one second. Jeff, the west side will, that will be seen from the interstate though, is that right?
There's actually a shelter belt right there. I'm not certain until surveyed to know whose side it's on.
There's not a good sight line.
Yeah, there's also the Ward family, that Oxbow and that, there's not great sight lines. Yeah, we're going to sit there, I mean, once you get by, that's an old farmhouse with an old Oxbow that you see, all those, all that timber. So, you're going to get to see it.
There's like a shelter belt right.
Seven second window, diving down the interstate or however long that takes you.
Thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of that then.
I'm not exactly sure where it falls. We're going to take it out if we can. If it's on the other side of the property, we're not, I mean, obviously we can.
Yep. So, is that unanimous?
If he needs to raise her hands again or?
Yeah. So, that's adding wainscoting on the east side, except for the door openings, but no additional wainscoting on the other two sides.
Correct.
So, then, if you are comfortable with approving the conceptual site plan, then I believe a motion that would incorporate conditions one through 10, except for condition four, because you've already addressed it.
We added an exception, or 11, right?
And Mr. Hers added an exception 11, which, or condition 11, which now becomes 10. So, if you believe that the basic elements of the proposed development plan conform with the intent of the overlay district requirements, you could approve the proposed development plan with the three exceptions that we've documented, and delegate, delegating to staff to address the following items prior to a building permit being issued. And that would be conditions one, two, and three, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10, and adding, I guess what would be a, a 10th condition relating to the driveway width. So, the, the best way to, to do that would be to identify that as alternative two, and that you recommend alternative two, subject to the conditions outlined in the report, except for condition four. That would be the best way to structure the motion.
Comfortable with that?
I would make that motion to.
Just say so moved.
In a second?
I think that is one of those so moved ones.
Yeah. Moved in second to approve application 3.1, section B, with the 11, staff recommendations, except for number four, and to instruct staff to work with the applicant to work out the details on the rest of them. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries.
So, your item 3.1C then is the preliminary plat, the single lot, 15 acre plat. And we have, you could approve the plat, you could recommend that consideration of the plat be postponed to provide additional information, or to allow major revisions to be made, or you could vote to deny the plat if you don't think it meets the review criteria. Our recommendation would be to approve the preliminary plat, incorporating all the public improvements shown on the plat drawing, which would include the stormwater detention and the public water line, and then it would be subject to the five conditions that are outlined on page five and, or four conditions outlined on page five and six of your report. And what that would mean is that in the interim time, our city engineer would work with Cobb Alley to iron out the final details of the drainage plan before that came back to you. And so, that, that would be the only item that would come back to you for further review would be the preliminary flat turning into a final plat.
Any questions or discussion?
Yeah, that makes sense. The only concern I had was that detention pond and draining out of the flood plane, so if they're going to work that out and bring it back, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, for an example, the, the ponds that are at the north end of the North Ohio Overpass, they were designed to be ornamental water features that held water year round. Problem was that the soil, even though it was clay, it was too porous, and so, the, the water still seeps through the bottom, and the ponds eventually dry out, so they don't. But that, that would be an example that when it's rainy, those ponds have water in them, and then when it gradually, it dries, they're dry bottom ponds. So, retention just means that it percolates through the soil, and detention means that it's sent to a location and discharged, and so, we will, we will work out that detail before the final plat.
Anyone care to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the preliminary plat with the four conditions that are listed on page five and six.
I second.
Moving in second to approve item 3.1C with the four conditions. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries. Thank you, Jeff.
For Mr. Mays' benefit, the only item here that goes on to the city commission would be the rezoning request, and that would tentatively happen on March the 27th.
Thank you again.
Thanks, Jeff.
So, our, our other public hearing item is item 3.2, and that is just for the commission to consider an amendment to the zoning district boundary and an amended site plan for the former town and country veterinary clinic property at 1001 Shipple Drive, to include a portion of lots 13 and 14, block four, and the Shipple addition replat. And just to be short and sweet, this particular item that we brought back to you is a, a story or, or lesson about the importance of surveys and the importance of legal descriptions. So, just for the commission's benefit, we received an application to change the zoning of this property, the, that involved two parcels in the description. One parcel was lot eight, block four, which is the corner lot that actually has the clinic on it. And then, the other part that was part of the rezoning request was lot five, block one, and the King Edition replat directly to the north. Unbeknownst to staff, the original veterinary clinic site included a portion of lots 13 and 14 directly to the east. And so, when you made your recommendation, we turned that recommendation into an ordinance, and in the ordinance, we rezoned lot eight, block four, and we rezoned lot five, block one, but we did not rezone the area that shaded there in blue, or was shaded there in blue. So, that, that area was not included in the description, and so, when we were reviewing the site plan, things, we were, we were having a hard time making things fit, because lot eight is 123 feet wide along Shipple Drive, but the parcel that the applicant purchased is 145 feet wide, so things fit much better on the 145 feet. But then, we were faced with parking spaces that were not located for, that were for the beauty salon, but not located on property zone for the beauty salon. And at one time, we had a plan to put the sign over in the southeast corner. And then, the other, the other reason and the importance of having surveys done is that the, we usually in a report don't put together a summary of the utility easement history, but I had Mr. Aiken do that, and since he was doing that, I just provided it for you, because this is an unusual piece of property, because it has so many dedications and vacations that occurred outside the plating process. So, we, we literally had to piece together what happened in 1991, and then what happened in 2014, and piece all that together. And the lesson for staff is that we didn't insist on a survey before we brought this to you. And so, now that we have an accurate survey, we have discovered that when we, and I don't know if you have the highlighted ordinance there, Dustin, to show. But we, we put it in the packet, but what we wanted to show you was that, at the end of your packet, we have the ordinance that was prepared. You'd have to go to the top, Dustin. So, you see at the top, this is, that is the description of the property that was rezoned, and that description does not include any of lots 13 or 14. And then, we attached the deed to the property, and I don't know if you have that, Dustin.
I'll do it in a moment.
So, the, the difference is that the, the deed says lot eight, block four, and then it says also a portion of lots 13, 14, block four, more particularly described as poss, as follows, which is essentially a 22-foot strip. So, it's on the second page, Dustin. So, what is missing from our zoning district is this description right here, and so, we have brought this back to you to see if you wish to recommend amending the boundary to include the west 22 feet of those lots. And then, we would have to take this back to the city commission and have the ordinance that was adopted amended to do that. So, we wanted to bring that back, because we didn't have absolute complete information for you when you made your recommendation, and we have since learned that instead of being 123 feet of frontage on Shipple, we actually have 145 feet, and we wanted to share that information. So, absent any questions that commissioners might have, if you'd be so inclined, we'd recommend that you approve an amendment of the original district to add that 22 feet in, and then we would fix the ordinance that was adopted.
Dustin, do we have any, any online?
The applicant is online if, if Mr. Burton has anything you'd like to share.
And does the commission have any questions?
The applicant is online if Mr. Burton has anything you'd like to share. I forgot to turn on my mic.
I'd be willing to make a motion, is that okay? Sure. If, if there are any other further discussion? No other comments?
I think it'll make parking a lot easier.
Having that extra 22 feet.
Yeah, seems like housekeeping. Go ahead.
I'd, I'd move that we approve the amendment to, of the original plan, see two district and site development, to incorporate the west 22 feet of lot 14 and a portion of lot 13, block four, into the zoning lot for the proposed beauty salon conversion.
Second. Moving in second to approve item 3.2 on our agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries.
Thank you. Staff has learned an important lesson about surveys, and we just wanted to share our lesson with you.
Good housekeeping. Any other business, Dean?
We have no other business to bring before you, other than the city commission did adopt the text amendment that allowed for consumer fireworks storage inside the city limits, and that was approved by the city commission. And then, another action that they took, just so that you're aware, we had a $2.1 million grant for rebuilding Centennial Road north of Waterwell Road, from there to just south of Schwan's. So, we have a, a $2.1 million KDOT grant. There's a local match of $400,000. The county said that if we would annex and take over the east side of Centennial Road, that they would chip in 200,000 of the 400,000. So, the city commission annexed the east half of Centennial Road. So, that project will be a city project and will be moving forward pretty soon, but it will be a reconstruction with, with curb and gutter and a hike bike path on the east side of Centennial Road there.
Great, great. Doesn't appear we have anyone that wants to address the public forum?
We do not have anyone online from the public.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So, moved.
In a second. Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard. We are adjourned.